Let's bring this June 15th Regular Council Meeting to order. If you can stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing for a moment of prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I just thank you for this day and we just pray for our council and our mayor and our city director as they hold this meeting and they are making decisions for our town. And Lord, I just pray that you would give them the wisdom and the knowledge on how to be the best stewards of our town's money and resources, Lord. And I just pray that this meeting would have your blessing on it. In your name I pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Brent. Okay, roll call.
Bariak.
Here.
Sabet.
Here.
Alberini.
Here.
Waddell.
Here.
Braymire.
Here.
Okay, the special presentation has been delayed, so let's go on to public comments. And a reminder that they're limited to items on the agenda in three minutes. So first state your name and your address. Okay, if there's no public comments. Public comments!
Dennis Richter, 231 Maple Street, Newton Falls, Ohio. In reference to Resolution 18, 2020, I'm in favor of that. Resolution 19, 2020, amending a lease contract for the AMI system, I'm not in favor of that. Ordinance 20, 2017, amending section 521.06. In reference to the sidewalks, require railroad to maintain the underpass, I'm in favor of that. Amending chapter 57, 557, in reference to weeds, grass, and shrubs, to require railroads to maintain the underpasses, I'm in favor of that. Ordinance 20, 2019, providing for the issuance of bonds in reference to the acquisition and improvement of real property, I'm opposed to that. Ordinance 20, 2020, 20, providing for the issuance of bonds in reference to improvements to baseball fields, I'm in favor of that. Ordinance 20, 20-21, providing for the issuance of bonds in reference to acquisition and installation of certain sewer improvement on Meadowley Avenue, I'm not in favor of that. Number eight, motion to accept the finance department May monthly report and attachments as presented, I'm in favor of that. And motion to accept the police department May monthly report, I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
John Rusko, 21 Eagle Point Drive, I'm here representing Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball. I just want to bring it to everybody's attention, even though we didn't have a baseball season this year, we're still pushing forward to finish what we have started. I just want council to know that we got one field to finish, and I really hope that you guys all work together and really think about tonight, about the funding for the field. We've already put our $16,000 to Hoover Fence, so we still need the funding from the city. And that's still out there and the material is here, so we still gotta move forward for what we started. So again, I just hope we can move forward and keep going with what we started. Thank you.
Jim Luwanawansu, 10 East Liberty Street. On 20, 20, 19, the purchase of the bonds for the purchase of property and upgrading of that property, that's the new church building, office building. Every single one of you sitting up there, you promised us when you bought that building, we didn't have to do much work to it. It was move-in ready. Now we're spending an extra $145,000 on that piece of property. Lie, lie, lie!
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order.
No, no! I'll apologize for it, Dave, in a week or 10 days on Facebook like you did to Rick Zemeznik. It's ridiculous. It went from $250,000, now it's $395,000. And all of a sudden, you want us just to swallow it like it's nothing? If you pass it, we're gonna file an injunction to stop it, or we're gonna file a referendum, or both.
Okay, reports.
Tim Stenson, 253 Arlington, got a couple things. You know, I don't understand why we're borrowing money. We have lots of money in the bank, one of our accounts is losing $12,000 a month, let's just take some of that money out and pay for our interest. We gotta stop spending so much money, it's ridiculous. $94,000, $12,000 on interest. $400,000, $52,000 on interest. Your building goes up another 50 grand. The baseball field, listen, you guys have done a terrific, terrific work. And I'm on Parks and Rec, I initially said absolutely we should help them, but there are also other leagues and recreation and other things that people need in this, in the city that want to spend money also. We've spent our Parks and Rec budget already on the baseball league and softball, which is great. Again, they've done a great job, but there are other needs in the community which we can also spend money on. And then the AMI thing, it's 400 grand in interest. Find another loan. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Brian Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I just, I really didn't have anything to say at the first comment, but I wanted you guys to all take a second to look up from the tables that you're sitting at, and look up from your phones and computers and everything, and look into the stands right now at all these people that are here that are really upset with you guys. They're here right now because they're tired of you guys spending their money willy-nilly on whatever you want. Listen to the people that are in these stands. Hey, we come here, we listen to you guys, we listen to you guys.
He's got the floor.
Thank you, sir. We listen to you guys, we pay attention, we listen to what's going on, and we can't even get the attention of our council people to even look up into the stands. This is the kind of stuff that we've been dealing with for almost 10 years now, at least that I've been here. So I just figured I'd take these few minutes and let you guys... These are the people in town, these are the constituents, these are the people that are here to tell you how they feel. Maybe you guys should actually listen to them. Thank you.
Brenda Kuntz, 411 Ravenna Road. I'm really upset reading about your COVID, $400,000 and how it was spent. Give me a second to breathe. I had COVID, I'm still suffering from what I dealt with. My nursing home lost a lot of residents to COVID. We're still trying so hard to get them to come off. And yet, one minute you're saying do this, and the next minute you're saying do that. You gotta make a stand, and I don't know what you spent your money on. You certainly didn't help out with the other stuff that was going on. Who did you help? That money was supposed to help somebody, who did you help? You bought some masks that you said that they had to wear, and then you wasted the money because the next week, you canceled it. And we spoke one time face-to-face, Mr. Lynch, about how important the masks were, and then you changed just like that. You can't be telling me that you're making important decisions for our city. And, but yet you change your mind like that on those things? I just don't get it. And I understand what Mr. Crop is saying about you not looking up here. I've been watching you and you don't even look at us. I sat on the Board of Education for 12 years. I looked everybody in an eye that talked to us, whether I agreed with them or not, because they deserved my respect. You don't have to agree with everything that I say, or I have to agree with what you say, but for Pete's sake, give people respect and stop doing the willy-nilly thing. Stand up and do what you gotta do. John, thank you for standing up for the people.
I'd like to make a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
What's the point of order?
Ma'am, we're having a hard time hearing you, we're having a hard time hearing a lot of the folks up here too. There's an echo coming back this way. I'm sorry, what'd you say? There you go.
Do we have another speaker? Somebody else want to address the council?
She's already had an address.
Terry, are you saying you could not hear me?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, there's an echo coming back this way.
We hear the echo too, but I can still... Can you hear me?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Up on the mic, I can hear you. Up on the mic, I can hear you.
Keep it down, she's got the floor.
Mr. Ken, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Ken Klein?
Yes.
Okay, if he can hear me, then maybe you...
Keep it down! We have any other public comments?
I just wanted to say thank you to the city and the Chief of Police, and what they are doing for Mike the Marine. Mike Rowe is a... Mike Rowe was a highly decorated Marine. And many of you were touched by what Mike did. He had 47 battle ribbons, and he won the Silver Star. And many veterans and many others appreciate the little encouragement and what we're doing to say we care about the veterans, and as Mike would say, "I love you like a ham sandwich."
Chuck Homer, 256 Woodland Street, I would like to address the spending. Haven't heard a single person say they were in favor for it. I've run a company, I do a lot of work with the pastors, there is nobody that I know of that says they're in favor of it. And the last I knew, you guys were elected to work for us. Are you there now? I'd like to thank John, as we watch, he definitely is very, very forward about making sure there's a lot of transparency. Also like to thank all of you, because you're not in a position where you're actually liked, and some of the time you take a lot of crap for past administrations and some of the things that they've done. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you, you haven't even been in the job long enough to blame him for anything, and you're still getting a blame. But I do stand against the spending, and I just wanted that to be known.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to reports. I'll start off, I got to start going door-to-door the other day, and I was around Superior Street, and I wanted to thank the residents there for greeting myself and my wife and allowing us to introduce ourselves to them, and listening to them as they shared their hearts. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that they discussed, a couple of things that were surprisingly the issues that they brought up the most. And one of the topics is the division and the vindictiveness of not only in the community, but as well as our local government. And the second one is the dealing of the drugs in our community. And I just wanted to make mention that both of these topics are gonna be getting a lot of my attention. Thank you. Mr. Sabet, you have anything?
No comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bariak?
I have no reports.
No reports? Okay, thank you. Mr. Waddell?
Yes, we have a few things here. You might have saw the paper today, and Scope is now coming to Newton Falls, they announced that in the paper today. That's kind of a lot of work that Mr. Lynch and I have done over the last two, three months to bring them back in, seeing the Silver Sneakers are going to be coming back, so we're excited about that. Also, the state has passed legislation to fund some of the broadband that we've been talking about, so there'll be more information on that. The... Having spent some time with the residents in East River Gardens and working with the gardens over there, I found out that there's a lot of issues with the landlords. About a year and a half ago, Mr. Bariak brought up the issues of trying to do some things with the landlords and with utilities, and it seems to have fallen short because I don't think there's any legislation that's pending or being worked on for the landlords. But there is a lot of help out there for some of these tenants that are having problems. They're living in filthy, unhealthy conditions, they're struggling with their landlords, landlords don't seem to care a whole lot. So I talked to the Trump County Borrow Association, and they sent me to the Legal Aid Society. And the Legal Aid Society works with the Clarence Darrow Clinic, and they will help people who need help with their rent, that are, they're being taken by their landlords or their security deposits are being held back for reasons that aren't, you know, exact. But there are a lot of, there's a lot of interesting things that are out there for renters in this community. Instead, you know, a lot of them don't have the funds to go file a complaint against somebody. There was a situation here recently where the tenants are living in mold and just horrible conditions. And the landlord supposedly told them if they went to the Board of Health that they wouldn't get their security deposit back. They did go to the Board of Health, the Board of Health is taking pictures, and they're in the process of taking action against the landlords. And if they decide they're gonna hold back rent or security deposits, we're gonna send them to the Legal Aid Society and help these people out. They also have a thing called dispute resolution services. And there's just a tremendous amount of programs out there for some of our tenants to use, and they don't know about it. And I didn't either until we started checking into it. So I'll tell you that by, I did talk to one landlord who I have a lot of confidence and faith in, that does a nice job, and he's going to get ahold of a couple of other landlords, and we're gonna have a meeting, hopefully with Mr. Lynch and with Mr. Fritz. And by, I hope, September's meeting, we will have legislation on the table to try to rein in some of these issues with these landlords and with these properties. There's no reason that anyone should live in filthy conditions or unsanitary, unsafe conditions in this community, and we're here to help them, and we're going to do something about that. That's just kind of what you were saying, people are questioning that, that's what we're gonna do. The other thing that's really exciting, that hasn't happened for years and years and years, and it's going to happen now, very soon we'll be working on the ditches on 534. We're going to be cleaning all those ditches out. There's a couple of property owners at the end of Ashland who have expressed an interest in wanting their ditches tiled, cleaned out and tiled, and so they don't have to mow down those ditches. And Mr. Shaver is going to be working with them to get that installed if they want to do that. All the, all the property on the country club where all that water's laying now will be in tile, they're gonna buy tile and put that all in tile. Talking to some of the owners of the Pomida property to see if they want to continue that. But we'll be, the engineers are out there the other day shooting grade levels and that, so hopefully very soon we'll be getting the water issues cleared up on 534, that's something that's needed to happen for an awful long time, so that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Braymire?
Hi. I just want people to know that we haven't forgotten about the dog park or the pickle courts. Now that the parks are being back open, we hope to get to that. And we need to have a Park and Recs meeting, and we're gonna try and do that once a month, and start to help other people that want to use the park. And nothing about the, against the baseball people or the children, but there are a lot of other people in this community that would like to use that park. Thank you.
Mr. Alberini, you have anything for us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will be convening a meeting with those interested in forming block watches for each ward. My contact information is on the city's website, plus my email address. I know we have interest in Ward 1, Mr. Rusko, and Mr. Davis also, Ward 3 as well. So I would encourage you, I've talked to there with Mr. Lynch and Mr. Fritz for Clarence, also Chief Fixler, and please contact me about it, let's get something rolling. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Finance Director?
And members of council and the citizens of Newton Falls. The update from the Finance Department is our annex building open to the public on June 8th. We are doing the things a little bit different, we will have social distancing rules when you come in the office, maximum allowed in the lobby at one time is two members of the public, and you are required to wear a mask. For the 2019 audit, we have begun that with our 2019 CAFR work being prepared, that will be submitted by June 30th to the State Auditor's Office. And the actual audit work scheduled with our IPA, which stands for Independent Auditing Firm of Charles E. Harrison Associates, will begin approximately July 27th. In addition, last week, we had the GameWorks Consultant that's gonna lay out our new playground equipment from the Nature Works grant that the city has received. They will be here on site tomorrow, and it is the goal to have the project completed by Friday, June 19th, depending on weather. And in addition, for tonight's agenda, there is a debt management plan laid out before council. At this time, I would like to introduce our team that has created this, and that is Andy Bursart, he is a registered municipal debt advisor from Bailey Payne. He's not here, but we do have our legal debt bond counsel here, his name is Mr. Blake Bleacher. He is from Calphe Halter in Griswold. And this team, we have worked on many months from what has council majority has passed several projects to go out to bid. The city did receive a bid, and there is a strict timeframe on this bid. The bid came in a term of interest at 2.37%, which is an outstanding rate, because after this bid we received, the interest rates have actually increased and gone up. Now I do want to have Blake explain at this time, at this debt package that we have, it is actually the acquisition cost of real property, baseball fencing project, Medley Avenue, those are being presented to council individually because it's dealing with a specific purpose. But the debt package that we received, it is an all or nothing, we have to pass all of it to be successful. And at this time, I'll let Blake explain that a little bit further in my report.
Is he on the agenda? Is Mr., are, is he on the agenda, ma'am?
He's part of my financial report, he's part of the debt management package, yes.
He's part of the financial report?
As, yes, my report under number six.
Well, I'm just, I'm sorry I got in on a tail, didn't know anything about it until the last minute. We could've talked before, couldn't we? Couldn't we, Anna? Couldn't we had a meeting or a workshop? Yeah, we're, I'm sorry, I didn't know anything about it.
Good evening, everyone. As Anna said, can everyone hear me? Can you hear me? Thank you. Again, my name is Blake Bleacher, I am a partner at Calphe Halter, and I've been working as bond counsel with the city to, along with its municipal advisor, to put together the legislation for this potential borrowing. Now, there are separate pieces of legislation, as the finance director has stated, because they get voted on a single purpose for each piece of legislation, and those get combined into one securities issuance. The bidder that came back to purchase these bonds was Huntington Public Capital Corporation. They take a risk by being the sole purchaser of the bonds, and they hold these bonds until maturity. So they don't come in, buy them, and then get rid of them, they would be essentially a partner to the village for the long term. 2.37% is, in my opinion, a competitive rate. I think the municipal advisor working with the village would say so as well, it's really his, his bailiwick rate there. That's, that's the main point of these. This bid provided by Huntington does expire on June 25th. So there is a little urgency in passing the legislation. Now, if that June 25th deadline passes, there, a couple things might happen. Huntington could go out and see what the interest rate they would want to charge for a new transaction. Could be higher, could be lower, there's a lot of different factors that could go in. Off the top of my head, you could have another serious COVID-19 outbreak, and, and that could, that could change, change the market rates. Alternatively, same situation, Huntington's finances might change, and they might decide to deploy their capital elsewhere. So, you know, not, not passing and issuing the debt by the 25th, it has some potential, you know, potential risks, but Huntington has indicated that, that they would want to partner with, with the village, and if that date can't be met, based on oral conversation... on oral conversations, they might be amenable to, uh, you know, issuing it a little later. But, uh, the caveat was, you know, there's no promise that this interest rate, uh, remains for this financing.
Um, Your Honor and members of council, I'm also with my report.
Mayor!
Bob.
All right, Mayor, members of council, can you hear me now?
No.
No.
Can you hear me?
No.
Test, hello?
All right, members of council, Mayor, and citizens of Newton Falls. As part of this debt management team plan presented to be tonight, um, I have certified certificates, I have provided debt amortization schedules, and also very important information, on June 5th, S&amp;P Global Ratings has assigned it an SP1+ for our electric amp system bond rating, and that is one of the highest rating that we can potentially obtain. So I just wanna show and demonstrate that we have presented the city in excellent financial shape to repay debt through our debt management plan. Thank you.
Any discussion?
And I have a question.
Mr. Bariak has the floor.
We're taking on a lot of debt here. What is the reason that we are going to take this on? Uh, nobody said the interest is gonna go. Why are, why is this an emergency? Like even the bond man says it may go higher, it may go lower. I, I think the people are fighting, and bonds right now aren't really the way to go. I've talked to people, and, uh, we didn't have money finding, we, look, here's, here's the thing. All of a sudden now we need money. I thought we had a lot of money. I thought we had plenty of money. We were, we were real well off, and now, and now we gotta come sticking our hand out and putting this community in 10 years' worth of debt. 10 years, and we won't even own some of this stuff. 10 years of debt, and it's not free money, like, oh, we're gonna get free money. We gotta pay the interest on this. Why do we have to do anything at all right now? Why?
The reason is why is the majority of council passed contracts, and we have to find a way to pay for them. Pago, which is cash on hand, we don't, we do have 8.4 million on hand, but not for these projects. We are fund accounting, so you're thinking of everything as a separate bucket, and special revenue funds can't be touched. Our enterprise funds cannot be touched. The court funds cannot be touched. The only fund that we can touch is the general fund. So therefore, this is the financial management plan.
Excuse me. Why didn't you come to council and say that we might have these problems? And let us get into this, and now we gotta look for a way to find the money? Why didn't you come to council? When before they pass it, you'd be fine.
Mr. Alberini's first address.
I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Alberini has the floor.
I have the floor, John, please.
Anna, I wanted to ask you a question. We talked about this earlier. Uh, could you explain to the public what your background is, your education, et cetera? Please do so.
I have the same background.
Go ahead, Anna.
Okay, my background is I have a master's degree in public financial management, not private sector accounting, government accounting background for over 25 years. So therefore, this is the best debt management plan we can provide with our consultants to make sure that the city is not in debt. In fact, the city has not even reached or approached our debt limits, comparison to our peers. Other communities have higher extreme debt limits than we do. Because they have time. You have no money. You are fired for two jobs.
Members, right now, keep the sidebar discussions down.
You have the right to be removed, too.
Well, they're gonna have to remove all of us. Send us all home.
Mr. Bariak, you have the floor.
Ms. Munson, I don't remember, uh, there's a couple other matters I'm gonna bring up tonight about with this debt package. East Gate was supposed to pick up the Medley. The, I wasn't told we were gonna have to put 90-some thousand dollars to it. Maybe the grant didn't come through. The 20-some thousand dollars for the baseball league, when, what Mr. Tinson said up there, he said, "We gave $50,000. We gave the whole Park and Recs budget to one entity." What about the soccer fields? I'm not against the people playing baseball. There's other people in this town that have a right to have something, too. And I hear they already tore down the fencing like it's a done deal. Nobody on Park and Recs, uh, even knew about it. Where was Park and Recs? As a matter of fact, you went ahead and bought the playground equipment, and Park and Recs jumped me and said, "Hey, we didn't know anything about what type of playground equipment."
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Bariak is gonna stay on top.
What's your point of order?
Here to discuss the debt package with Mr. Beachiller, Ms. Anna, not this other side show.
No, don't start point of order with me. What's your point of order?
Point of order. You're not the mayor, point of order. Act civilized.
No, 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 no. All the time shutting me down. I gotta...
Act civilized, John.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. All right, the Medley Sewer Project is Ohio Public Works' grant. The 94,000 is our local share. Regardless of the grant, we still have to come up with that money. In addition to the playground fencing, I received an invoicing working with the city manager on that. That was not part of the budget, and we need to come up with a way to finance it. Yes, it was a part of the budget last year, okay? So these projects are to make our community better, not to divide it at a park.
I want the best for this community. I'm not trying to divide it. Anna, excuse me. Don't, don't infer that.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, Law Director.
I got the report, sir.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
I'll, I'll save my report until the end, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda? Yes.
I should add, uh, Resolution 20-2020.
I wanna address the city manager.
We're past that, John.
I didn't hear that.
We're past that.
I didn't hear it. It's Mr. Klein, I wanna have questions for the city manager. I did not hear that.
Hold on. You'll have your opportunity to address him when he does his report. Okay? What was the number for the, uh...
20, 20-2020.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Alberini, second. Okay, roll call.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymeyer?
Yes.
Berriac? Savet?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Approval of the previous minutes to June 1st regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Submove.
Okay, Mr. Waddell. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Savet. Um, roll call.
Alberini?
Upstate.
Waddell? Braymeyer?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes approved. Public hearings, none. Unfinished business, none.
The city manager comes after the law director. I wanted to ask some questions. I didn't hear it, and we went right past it.
He's gonna do his report.
I wanted to ask some questions.
You'll get your chance.
When?
At the end of the meeting.
Oh.
New business. Okay, Mr. Bariak, do you wanna speak on Resolution 182020, condolences to, uh, Michael Rowe family?
Yes, I'd like to say a couple of things.
Okay. Do we have a motion to put on the floor first?
Submove.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, um, roll call.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bariak.
Yes. Um, I knew Mike Sarge, I called him, I knew Mike, and, uh, for all the time I knew Mike, never once did that man ever blow his own horn about what he'd done in battle, although the 47 battle ribbons and the Silver Star, which is just below the Medal of Honor. But his whole, he, his whole thing was never leave a kid behind either, because he did a lot for the Toys for Tots and that, and he gave unselfishly of himself. And, uh, I, all I wanna say is that he was one great guy. Semper Fi.
Okay, any other comments? Resolution, please? Yes.
A resolution of condolence commemorating the passing of Michael Milton Rowe. Whereas Michael Milton Rowe passed away on the date of June 6th, 2020, and whereas Michael Milton Rowe was the beloved son of Georgia and Ambrose, who has faithfully for many years served our country as a Marine in Vietnam, and whereas Michael Rowe received the Silver Star, Purple Heart, and 47 other citations during his military career. Whereas Michael Rowe participated in the USMC Toys for Tots for 52 years, and whereas Michael Rowe also gave his time to honor other military veterans by participating in hundreds of military funerals for his brothers and sisters at arms. And therefore, be it resolved that because Michael Rowe will be deeply missed, the city of Newton Falls, through its city council, does hereby extend its condolences to the entire Rowe family.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, next resolution.
Braymeyer? Berriac? Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Okay, resolution passes.
Resolution 19-2020, a resolution awarding the lease contract for the AMI system to Huntington Public Capital Corporation, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and instruments that are necessary or desirable to effectuate said financing.
Alberini? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Waddell? Comments? Roll call.
Braymeyer?
No.
Berriac?
No.
Savet?
Yes.
Okay, resolution passes.
Resolution 19-2020, a resolution awarding the lease contract for the AMI system to Huntington Public Capital Corporation, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and instruments that are necessary or desirable to effectuate said financing.
Alberini? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Waddell? Comments? Roll call.
Braymeyer?
No.
Berriac?
No.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Okay, resolution passes.
Do you wanna do 20 now, or do you wanna wait till the end?
Yeah.
Do it now? Resolution 20-2020, a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or finance director to request the city of Newton Falls' share of funds from the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund.
Do we have a motion? Alberini? Do we have a second?
Uh, could, could I ask, what, what did you just read? I don't see it.
The one that you added. I just kept it in the resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
What is it?
The one we just added.
Oh.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, um, discussion. Mr. Mayor?
Is this the same one? Is this, which one is this?
The one I had laying on the table when you got here that you just added.
The, the one we just added?
Yeah.
That's 2020, 20-2020, the resolution for the, to, what, do you, we have a little input on this from the city manager?
Yes. Yes. Uh, 20-2020 is a reflection of HB 481, which I've been describing to members of the public and at the council meetings as SB 310. SB 310 was changed and revised in the state legislature last week, and was finally passed sometime on Thursday. The Ohio Municipal League prepared legislation in order to be in conformance for the 481, uh, House Bill from the state, and they shipped that to us sometime Friday night. That's the reason why this is being added today. We received the legislation from the Municipal League on Friday night. But this is the very legislation I've been talking about at the council meetings, my gosh, for probably the last 10 to 12 weeks. This is the resolution that allows us to take receipt of the emerg, excuse me, the emergency COVID-19 money in order to reimburse, uh, some folks have talked about COVID expenses that we've sent, uh, spent. Uh, this resolution allows us to receive the money, uh, to reimburse us for those expenses, so that it's actually taken care of originally through the CARES Act, which was passed through to the state legislature, and now appears as HB 481. And I asked council to pass the resolution tonight so we can get our reimbursement of the COVID money.
Okay, any other comments?
Solution, uh, for us to get the, uh, the money, and once it's passed, we have to send our resolution to the county auditor and to the Office of Budget and Management, and this will be, this, uh, HB 481 will be signed by the governor if it's not already.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Our question. Um, Mr. Lynch, uh, what do you project as far as the financial windfall coming back from the COVID grant?
I am anticipating that the funds coming in will reimburse the entirety of our COVID-related approximately $50,000.
Okay, if not, um, roll call.
Berriac? Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell? Braymeyer?
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Ordinance 2020-17, an ordinance amending Newton Falls Codified Ordinance, Section 521.06, duty to keep cot sidewalks and repair and clean in order to expedite sidewalk maintenance by all property owners such as railroad or other commercial owners.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Bariak, do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Braymeyer? Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Mr. Savet?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, can you, um, have we talked to the planning and zoning board about these resolutions? Uh, no, we have not. Uh, this is a, uh, first reading that was inspired by, uh, requests from Councilman Berriac that we find a way to hold the railroad property owners, uh, more accountable.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bariak?
Uh, there are a few questions I'd have. What do we, for, when it pertains to the law director, what do we do if we do the work and they don't pay? Can we have that on?
They have the same responsibility as a private property owner. There's a potential for a lien, but quite frankly, I don't think we can ever get CSX to pay on a lien.
What do we, for, when it pertains to the law director, what do we do if we do the work and they don't pay? Do we have that on?
They have the same responsibility as a private property owner. There's potential for a lien, but quite frankly, I don't think we can ever get CSX to pay on
We'll put it on a tax duplicate, is that what you're saying?
Yes, but the United States Commerce Commission gives an agreement protections to the railroads. So quite frankly, I don't think you'll ever collect.
Look, I want the public to know that for years, these trestles have been very unkept. People can't even walk down a street. There was a lady that called me that couldn't get her baby buggy down through there. And it's just become overgrown to the point where something has to be done. We have four entrances into town, one on Old Warren Road, we have one in North Center Street, one on North Canal, and one on Ridge Road. And these are the main entrances into town. And is this how we want to showcase our town? I thought not, and I kind of wondered why, we'd never done anything about it before. And I'm glad that we, right now, we are going to try to do something. And I'd even like to say, maybe somebody brought up a suggestion, or maybe we could paint them, slap a coat of brick paint on them, and put, "Welcome to Newton Falls," at least it wouldn't cost us $650 a month like that road sign out there on Route 5.
Okay, if no other comments, roll call.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell? Braymeier?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Ordinance 2020-18, an ordinance amending Newton Falls Codified Ordinance, Chapter 557, weeds and grass to include railroad and commercial properties.
We have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Braymeier, second. Mr. City Manager has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is similar to the previous ordinance. Councilman Bariak and I probably spent about an hour driving around town last week, and we identified these areas that were especially neglected by the railroad. And the purpose is to try everything we can to begin to hold them accountable.
Mr. Fritz?
I'd like to add that with regard to this property, since it's not the part of the tracks, we have had some success in billing CSX in the past, and we can put tax leads because this is on the land for the outbuildings and some of their storage areas. So we have some teeth we can put into this section, whereas the underpasses are part of the right of way, and as I said, we can't do much with those. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Excuse me.
Mr. Bariak?
I'd like to, there's been an issue in the past about us collecting some of the money from our mowings and some of the other stuff. We may have a little bit of a problem here, I don't know, I've just heard from the law director, but at least we're finally starting to move forward to do something for the citizens in this town. Sidewalks, hopefully roads. Thank you.
Roll call.
Alberini? Waddell? Braymeier? Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-19, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of various purpose general obligation bonds of the city of Newton Falls, Ohio, in a principal amount not to exceed $395,000 to pay the cost of the acquisition and improvements of certain real property and improvements for years as a municipal building and declaring an emergency due to the expedited increase in interest rates and the possibility of having no bid, current bid expiring June 25, 2020, at all on these bonds due to the rapidly changing economy.
Alberini, do we have a second?
Second.
Waddell? Comments?
I, I go back to the, when I, when I passed it by the church, I took a walk through it, and really, I don't know if the public will be allowed to go through it, but it's really not that bad, it's in very good shape. And I thought, well, from what I was assured, at the time, I thought we were going to pay cash for it, but that didn't turn out. And then, we were going to make the repairs on a as come, you know, as we go along basis. I didn't know this was going to mushroom into $395,000. By the time we paid the 250 for the church, 195 for repairs, and another 50 for interest, we're over half a million dollars. Now, I want the public to know that I personally don't want to leave, I'm, I'm getting into the home stretch in my life, and I have a feeling for those that'll come after me even to sit in this chair. And I don't want to leave them with their hands tied because they're bound with some kind of fiscal obfuscation that we have, like we do with Amp Ohio. We have contracts to 2034 and 2048. Now, I've, I've asked the law director, I mean, the finance director, for what are we in debt? And I understand, you heard her say tonight, there's different line items, there's different funds, there's different equations, but if I'm wrong, Hannah, doesn't that total about $12 million we're already owing out? When I added it up, was it about 12 million?
We only have one debt that is on our debt limit, and that is the electric bond, the rest are just loans, which are part of the rate studies for the water, sewer, and electric.
I didn't say the limit, I said, how much do we have, how much are we in debt technically?
I would have to get back to you, I already provided you that information, a previous finance director's report.
I don't want to call you, I don't want to call myself a liar, but I thought it totaled up around 12 million, and we want to go stick another 4 million there, and, and Hannah, I want to ask you a question. Could I ask a question? Are we really sure that our revenue sources are going to be able to sustain what says to me here, 175, 175, that's kind of payments twice a year?
As I stated in the beginning of the year, we're working on a debt management plan. As I stated before, we're trying to refinance our debt, such as a USDA. So this is part of the debt plan because we have contracts that are obligated, there is not enough cash on hand to pay for all these projects. So I have certified the legal requirements per Ohio Vice Code in the financial certificates. We have our financial expert, our bond counsel, that can actually back and explain this debt any further questions you may have.
Mr. Alberini has the floor.
Thank you. I want to say this to the citizens, I, you know, regardless of what we say up here, it's going to be, everybody's against what we do. The purchase of the, the purchase, excuse me, the purchase of the, of the church property is a great investment for the city of Newton Falls. It's appraised at a million dollars. There's going to have to be some investments made internally inside, but I think our goal of the council was to consolidate all the operations into one location for some of our citizens who would like a one-stop shop. I don't know who would be opposed to that. Maybe the people who don't pay taxes in town would be opposed to that, but I would say that the majority of the folks that I talked to that are, that are taxpayers of Newton Falls are all for this purpose of buying the church. Matter of fact, the number of residents over in the number of streets where I live at, we're all for the city procuring this church, I think it's a great idea. I appreciate the interruptions and the classlessness, but anyway, long story short, I'm all for the purchase of the church and looking forward to consolidating all of our operations over there and making it a one-stop shop.
Okay, any other comments? Sure, go ahead, Mr. Bariak, second address.
Look, what I've tried to bring up was, another thing was, we, and it was on the council floor, that we as a council were going to sit down and determine what we were even going to do with this building, whether we were going to have a recreation as center as part of it, whether we were going to use it for scope, what we were going to meet as a council. I had to find out in the newspaper today that we're going in with scope. What, what kind of, what kind of city government are we operating here? Why didn't I, you, the mayor mentioned that two months ago, we may be going into scope. I knew nothing about it. Now, the, I called the city manager today, and the city manager says, I haven't signed anything yet. I said, well, I'm not asking whether you signed anything. I said, how come I wasn't made aware of it and I got to look in the paper? This kind of government can't go on in Newton Falls. And the people are going to speak, and what's done in the dark is going to come out in the light.
Okay, Mr. Alberini, second address.
I do recall that we had talked about scope, I do recall that Councilman Waddell had conversations with them at some point in time, and the goal was to bring them on into the congregation or the church when it was purchased. You were there when those talks were taking place, so.
To negotiate contracts? I thought the city manager does that. What gives Mr. Waddell the right to do negotiations?
Mayor.
I'm just asking a question.
I didn't say the mayor, may I address?
It's a fair question, isn't it?
Let me repeat myself. We had talked about this months ago, Councilman Waddell, not the mayor, Councilman Waddell had a relationship with the folks at Scope, and I believe he talked to them coming from Lordstown back to Newton Falls. So that's what I had said.
Okay, any other discussion?
You were there, John, I'm sorry.
Mr. Waddell?
Just to clarify, I, I didn't ask them to come from Lordstown to here, we wanted to create a new one, so this, they did, they are closing the Lordstown, I don't want to get, you know, we did not ask them to come from Lordstown to here. There are a lot of people from Newton Falls that go to Lordstown. Yeah, and, you know, I was a little bit surprised to read that too, supporting Mr. Bariak, they didn't, we talked about it, they told us that they were going to work with it, we've been trying to get them to commit to coming here, and they committed this morning to be here, so that's great as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Braymeier?
Yeah, I've not been discussed anything about Scope, I don't remember hearing anything about the Scope coming, coming into the new building or the sneakers people, I've not remembered hearing anything about that until I saw the paper today. Thank you.
I do recall when we were talking about what we would be willing to pay for it, that we were hoping to bring some of these organizations back, but there was no conversation or no agreement or anything. Any other discussion?
Okay. Roll call.
Waddell? Braymeier?
No.
Bariak?
No.
Savet?
Yeah.
Alberini? Ordinance 2020-20, an ordinance to provide for the issuance of not to exceed 20,000 of general obligation bonds to pay the cost of acquiring and installing certain site improvements comprised of fences for municipal baseball fields and declaring an emergency due to the expected increase in interest rates and the possibility of having a no bid, current bid expires June 25, 2020, at all on the bonds due to the rapidly changing economy.
Do we have a second? Baseball fields, it's the 6, one down.
Excuse me, aren't these written up as emergencies? Well, doesn't it take four to pass it as an emergency?
Yes.
Well, why was the last one, was the last one emergency?
Mr. Fritz?
It's no longer an emergency, but it passes for the first reading. It's always been. So it passes, but not as an emergency. We have to have a second reading and it can continue.
It's not complete.
And go back through the legislation?
No, sir.
Why don't we have, why, when you put emergency legislation, don't we have to have four votes to pass it?
Sir, we had this conversation last year, I'll try one more time. It is a.
All right, don't discuss it then, we'll, we'll go through, we have another reading on it.
Thank you, Aaron.
All right. We have discussion on the ordinance that we're on.
I think the, John Risco and his group have done an outstanding job with the ball fields, I commend you for that, you've put a lot of time and effort into that, and unfortunately, as I was told today, it seems like no good deed in Newton Falls goes unpunished, and I hope you don't get punished for that, because I'm proud of what you've done, I'm proud of your managers and what they've done, you've turned that place into a showcase. I love baseball, I'm missing it, I mean, there's a lot of baseball fans here, I just want to see baseball played, I don't care about no mask or anything, I want to see baseball played.
Any other comments? Okay, if no other discussion, what's that, Mr. Bariak?
Which one are we on?
The baseball field, the 6, one down, 2020-20.
Ordinance 2020-19?
Dash 20.
Okay. That's an emergency too, isn't it?
Yes. Okay, if there's no other discussion, roll call.
Braymeier? Bariak? Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Okay, this reading passes.
Number 2020-21, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of various purpose general obligation bonds of the city of Newton Falls, Ohio, in a principal amount not to exceed $98,000 to pay the cost of the acquisition and installation of certain sewer improvements comprising the Medley Avenue Sewer Project and declaring an emergency due to the expedited increase in interest rates and the possibility of having no bid, current bid expiring June 25, 2020, at all on these bonds due to the rapidly changing economy.
Okay, do we have a motion? Alberini? Second. Waddell? Discussion?
Yes.
This is in my ward, and I want to see everything good for the people in my ward, but I'm going to be true to my heart, and I'm not going to vote for anything under emergency, and especially when it's lumped together, and I was told we, we didn't need $94,000. I was told that Eastgate was going to take Washington Street, First Street was going to be paved, and this, and I didn't know, now, I was never told we had that high of a matching grant. So I'm just going to stand by my principles, I'm against emergencies, and I'll vote no tonight.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, we are under a federal consent order from the EPA to do this project, and the citizens of Medley Avenue have been waiting a very, very long time to see these sewers corrected. The Ohio Public Works Commission has approved this on a grant basis, and Madam Finance Director, what is the rest of it coming from them?
The rest of the money comes from the grant, only 90, approximately 90,000 is our local share.
Right, now how much more are they kicking in?
I do not know. I would have to research that and get back to you.
Okay. The only reason I want to emphasize that is that the EPA order and the suffering of those citizens, we worked very hard to get this approved. The OPWC has allowed this one to go through, but the one on First Street, I'm also expecting the OPWC to come forward on, and also the one on Washington, which would mean we have three projects from the Ohio Public Works Commission, and that's the first time that's happened in about 20 years in Newton Falls, and the order from the EPA isn't something that we have the option to disobey, and I hope that in the interest of the environment and the citizens of the folks on Medley Avenue, that passage is. Avenue, uh, that passage is, uh, considered this evening.
Mr. Bariak, you have the floor.
Look, last year, we had a project over at, um, Mr. Alberini's ward, where he lives, on, um, what's the name of the development over there? Eagle Point. Well, the grant didn't cover all that. We didn't go borrow money. We pulled it out. We pulled, what, almost $90,000 to finish your project? Why don't we find that money? Why do we have to borrow it to finish mine? Why don't we just find, we found money for you to the point where the sewer is now low?
Point of order.
We may have to have higher rates.
Mr. Bariak, um, I think that I'm council at large. Ward one is Zach. That is my neighborhood. But you had a group of people over there who got together, uh, and formed a small committee when Joe Batisti was here. And Joe and those folks are the driver behind that project. Now, here's what I would tell you. Don't penalize the people in your ward for a project that they need. I'm council at large. I look at it as an investment to those people who have been waiting. Don't keep your people in your ward waiting for this project.
Mr. Waddell, did you have a?
Oh, is it my turn now? Thank you. This is the, uh, the problem in this community. You're chastised when you don't do anything. And then you're chastised when you do something. And we've talked about the, uh, the need to do a lot of things and it takes money to do it. And the, this city, many cities across the United States have the ability to do certain things and bonds are one of them. And that's, sometimes that's how you have to do it. Now, if you don't want to pass this and you don't want to fix it, then don't complain because we're not trying to do something. So that's the biggest problem. No matter what you do, this group here wants to chastise you no matter what you do. Right, wrong, or indifferent. And, uh, so there's the, there's the, there's the problem. You either fix it and you, you know, borrow the money to fix it and pay the bonds back, or you just don't fix it. Uh, it's that simple.
Ms. Braymire, you have the floor.
I think, I think, um, one of the main problems is the word emergency. When I think about an emergency, I think my roof blew off and it's an emergency to fix it. I think that word emergency should not be used anymore to force people to vote for something immediately without, without people being able to speak. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Alberini.
That was a great point, Sandy. But I would say it's an emergency to those folks there who have been waiting.
We'd get over there for you and I'll get my people together and we'll.
Mr. Bariak. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bariak. Savet.
Yes.
Alberini. Waddell.
Yes.
Braymire.
Okay, moves on to next reading.
Can't he get some of those people out of there? My God. No wonder.
Report and attachments as presented.
Do we have a motion? Alberini, do we have a second? Bariak.
Over on administration costs, has that not been adjusted yet, Ms., uh, Munson? Are we still?
What's the question?
I wanted to know that we're still over on administration. Or has that been adjusted? We were supposed to have that adjusted. Has it been adjusted? It's still.
At the end of June, cost allocation is done on a quarterly basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments? Do we have any discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Savet.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Munson, can you give a brief description of how our revenues have been coming in for our tax collections?
That question? All right, our income tax collections at the end of May, year-to-date comparison to last May, year-to-date, were approximately 12.92% down in income tax collections. If you go to the monthly distribution report for period five, it's on page two, you'll see year-to-date oh five, 2020-2019, the first column. The rest of the revenues for income tax, municipal court, and investments is in the back of the report. It's a comparison from last year to this year. And you will see how COVID-19 has impacted basically the municipal court revenue mostly. Everything else, we're doing okay on. We're financially still stable. And our state, our statement of cash position, which is page one of two in the beginning, right now at the end of May, overall for all of our funds, we're at 8.2 million. The general fund is sitting at eight, $782,000. And again, we have all these different funds. You can think of fund accounting in different buckets where we can't touch anything. It's restringent pyrohigh revised code. That's all I have to say.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Alberini.
Um, Anna, thank you for the information. The revenue stream drop is about between 11 and 12%. Is that what she said?
Just on the income tax revenue only.
In comparison to other communities, our size, uh, our size would have some of those. I've read like 20, 25% drops.
Sure, hold on. Are you still?
On that, overall, I've been talking to the regional income tax agency throughout across the state of Ohio. Some are like 2% down, some are like 40% down. But on average, I would say other communities on board are between 20 and 30% down.
Mr. City Manager, did you want to be recognized?
Compared to our peers.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Yeah.
Alberini.
Yes.
Waddell. Braymire. Bariak.
Okay, motion passes.
Motion to accept the police department may monthly report.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Waddell, do we have a second? Ms. Braymire. Discussion. Okay, roll call.
Waddell. Braymire. Bariak. Savet.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Public comments?
Open to any items. Use your name, your address, three minutes.
Dennis Richter, 231 Maple Street, Newton Falls, Ohio 444444. I would like to know how a government body can spend its way out of debt. You all voted to buy a church in a residential area and turn that church into administrative offices for one quarter million dollars, ignoring the needed infrastructure that is more important right now. The roads in town are full of potholes and crumbling. Dave Lynch made a promise that more roads would be paved, more than ever before. Dave Lynch has stated that he would partner with Trumbull County Engineering to save money to get this task completed and reduce costs. Dave Lynch has all stated that he would seek matching funds through the grants to add to the existing fund of the road monies collected through the additional license plate tax to get this done. None of it's happened. None. Council voted to expend the money from the general fund to pay for a church to relish themselves and new office space. What is more important? You snubbed and thumbed your noses at the taxpayers because you think you come first and you are putting the needs of the taxpayers last to get what you want with no consideration for the taxpayers whatsoever. You should be ashamed of yourselves for basking in your snobbish attitude. The people in this town did not want this type of expenditure without upgrading the infrastructure of the municipality first. And you sit there in front of the public saying it's a good idea and move for Newton Falls. How so? And since when do you think you can spend tax money, money with no regard for the community you live in? Now there's a deficit in the general fund. You spent most of the general fund money on a church for new offices to pamper yourselves. You show no respect for the people that built this town from the ground up. You're on a collision course. Shameful.
John Rusko, 21 Eagle Point Drive. Lot of great comments about the baseball fields. Um, one thing that a lot of people probably don't know, because I have never heard it at a council meeting, is what the baseball league has donated themselves. Not only did the city give 50,000, but the baseball league itself raised, fundraised 41,000 of our own money. And the fence got tore down because I took my personal vacation to help the city to tear it down. So that was me that tore it down to help out. That bothers me because I'm taking my personal vacation to help the city park. And we got fence sitting, waiting to be put in. And we're just waiting on funds to get paid for. And we're still fundraising the baseball league to pay for it. We paid our part. The soccer league paid there last year. I didn't get one donation. The high school, we got $250 that plays on it. You don't think that bothers me? I appreciate whatever the city has done and still does. But this is why the baseball board gets run out. Thank you.
Brenda Coontz, 411 Ravenna Road. As I came to this meeting, I wanted to find out what I was reading on Facebook was true. And as I see some of you react to people, I don't always agree with yelling, but the way you treat each other too was, I'm sorry, I was very disturbed by it. You're put on these committees, um, you're voted in by different people and you want different people with different ideas. You don't want everybody to be an Alberini or a Bariak. You don't want to do that. You want the different opinions because that's how the world goes around. But for you to treat each other like you are, like you're better than anybody else? How shameful. I was really surprised that they were telling the truth. I am shocked. And Mr. Alberini, yes, you got your sewer stuff done. But when I was calling, I live on Ravenna Road, at the same time, I was told that my flooding, there was no money for it. But then Eagle Point got fixed. So please don't sit on your high horse back there because you got priority over some of us because of where you are.
Any other public comments?
I'm coming, I'm coming. Brian Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street over in the first ward. Zach, wherever you may be right now, we'd love to have you here at the meeting, buddy. Uh, it's been like, I don't know, three, three meetings, four meetings. Representation being here would be a great thing. I really wasn't going to address any kind of specific points other than, I hope you guys see this up here. I hope you guys understand what this means, the reaction, the response from the people in town. This is going to continue. This isn't going to stop. People are not happy. They're not happy and they're going to speak up. Look around. This is probably the largest contingent of people in a meeting since I've been here. Get ready to expect this more often, guys. Until you guys start actually listening to us and listen to these people, we're going to keep coming down here and keep talking and saying whatever we need to say and do what we need to do until you listen, until you hear us. Stop spending our money like drunken sailors, please. That would be first. Please stop spending money on things we don't need. We have infrastructure problems as Mr. Richter talked about. My goodness, just walk around. Go walk around town. Have any of you guys like taken strolls through town to see what it looks like? Stop buying yourself stuff. Stop buying new offices and all this other fancy stuff. 10 years have gone by and we've been, there's been no economic development, no anything. Now we're going to buy new buildings. To what? Entice who? You guys don't market or advertise this town. This is the only advertising and marketing this town gets. This kind of advertising, negative, loud, public response to you guys not doing your jobs. And only three fifths of you are elected. Thank you.
That's a little high. I'm Lyd. I'm Lydah Clark. I live on South Canal, Newton Falls. And I am a trustee of the church that you are buying. And me and my husband removed stained glass windows from the chapel. And Mr. Lynch said to Nancy, could I have one of the windows back? I'd like to see them. And in good faith, I did. But then I get a phone call, him wanting the other one back. I thought I was getting a phone call to come and get the one I took up for him to see. Well, that didn't happen. And all the chapel stuff is stored in Ruth Sherrick's house. And I would like to have the window back, Mr. Lynch, that belongs with it, all the chapel stuff. The only thing missing is the stained glass that you have and won't return.
Jim Lawanawansu, 10 East Liberty Street. I too was a little bit taken back when I read the newspaper this morning. Building we've only put $50,000 down on. Building that we've, Mr. Lynch has changed the contract on, amended, to not pay off until November. Not sure that that original ordinance is still even valid. The original ordinance said we were going to pay off the church sooner than that. The original ordinance and the real estate contract says that the church members can worship there. I understand this last weekend, they were locked out and told to go worship someplace else because there was coronavirus testing going on. And I also understand that our finance director was calling certain council people lobbying for their votes on the bond issues this week. Now, if that's true, that's way out of the realm of your job, Anna. You take care of the books. You don't rally for votes. It's time for all this silliness to stop. And we're not going away. We have two referendums out. And Joe can tell you, all you want to hear, that they're not referendable. But I'd advise you to look up the cases that Warner Lang beat the city on and that Judge Rice ruled on. And any act, any act of this city council is subject to referendum. And we'll take it to court if we have to because the people are going to speak. And also, better check Robert's Rules of Order. When something's on, is it a? When something's on as an emergency and it doesn't get four votes, it's dead. It has to be brought back to the floor as a new ordinance. Doesn't automatically go to a first reading.
I'm at 227 North Center. Over the last couple of meetings that I've watched, it's funny because I only see one set of ears that actually listens, so I'm going to talk to that one set of ears. Thank you for cleaning up the railroad over there by the sidewalk. And thank you for listening to the people and actually voting with your heart and listening to us when you do vote on things. Thank you, Mr. Bariak.
And in all the discussion about the smart meters, I have a question. Are we allowed to opt out of having the smart meter? I've heard that we can, but I don't know if that's true or not. Because if it's true, I'm going to opt out, and I assume a lot of other citizens will opt out. So that is a point that needs clarified. Can we opt out of the smart meter? Thank you.
I don't want to add to the lynching, but I do want to thank John because he has done a lot of work with the baseball league. And I think that it's really changed Newton Falls a little bit. I think we got behind him. And he's really changed the face of the park down there. So everything that we can do to make that a better place, that's what everybody sees when they come to watch their kids play sports. So I mean, that's a big thing. So thanks, John.
Okay.
Am I up? Okay. Yeah. Just a couple of things. Mr. Richter, this is the end of June. The bids just came in on our roads. So how can you say nothing is done? We haven't even awarded a bid for the contracting on our roads. Say nothing's done is unfair and wrong. Those bids just came in. It's June. We don't award those bids till the beginning of July. Last year, we did more roads than we've done in a long time. So the phrase "nothing's been done" is very far from the truth. In addition to that, it was indicated that there's a deficit in the general fund, you heard the finance director's report, that also is untrue. Ms. Sherrick complained about windows. Her signature is on a document that says the church doesn't want the windows. Anybody that wants it, here's my email. David M. Lynch NF@gmail.com. And you'll see her signature on that document. In addition to that, Nancy DeSalvo has a key to that building, the church representative. She enters in and out freely on a regular basis, including this past weekend when she sent me an email and said they had made a determination not to go in this past weekend. That surprised me. She's got a key, and they've never been locked out. It's another thing that's patently untrue. Folks, when you stand at a microphone in a public building, take responsibility for the truth of your remarks. That's not fair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Any discussion?
Lynda Clark, South Canal, Newton Falls.
You already have one addressed, Ms. Clark.
Oh, I'm not allowed to?
Any other comments? On the city manager report.
Mr. Bariak has the floor. I don't understand, I don't understand about the window.
Mr. Bariak has the floor.
What is the deal about the window, Mr. Lynch? What is the deal about the window? I'm asking him about the city manager's report. He said he Xed off on something. What about the window?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, the contract signed by the trustees provided a list of the items, and it's attached to the contract. That's the answer, Mr. Bariak.
Why did we want the window?
We didn't want the window in particular. They made the list. The church made the list.
It's a religious artifact, isn't it?
Mr. Bariak has the floor. The public comments are over.
All I'm saying is, what do we want with a religious artifact?
We don't, I have no particular need for the window.
Well, why are we fighting over a window?
I'm not fighting over a window.
Why didn't you give the window back?
The contract indicated that they didn't want the window.
Any other, any other comments for the city manager? Okay, if not, closing remarks. We'll start off with Mr. Savet.
No comments at this time.
Okay, Mr. Bariak.
I just have a few things tonight. First of all, before the meeting, I talked to the city manager. Mr. and Mrs. Dennis Valo Sr. would like to donate two picnic benches that the city can pick out anything they want, to its uniform, to the city code, or whatever they want, and they would want to pay for them. And I don't know if they want to put them in Commerce Park. I don't, but it was a very nice gesture. Now, here's something, to Mr. the ball field Rusko. John, you know, I don't blow my own horn, so I'm not going to start now, but I've helped out myself. Why have the boosters from the school, why have not the, or the school itself, or somebody else stepped up to help out? We have other people in this town. The soccer league never gets anything. There's other people that have wanted a pickleball court, that have wanted, well, they've gone to Ohio's to say they want a splash pad, which is a lot of money right now. We probably couldn't do that. But we have other people in this town that have to be, their needs to be addressed to, their taxpayers. Now, like, now, here, I knew nothing about the scope deal, but I wanted to ask the city manager tonight, which I didn't, I'm not, because I don't want to be argumentative, but we, like I said, we were supposed to have a meeting on what was supposed to go in there, and like I heard about it, was in the paper. You know, folks, line item 201, 202, and 203, there's not a dime in there this year for road repairs. I was promised we were going to get a law out of road repairs, more than we got last year. I don't know. Also, I know there's no money for demolitions. We have four properties, four properties, two burned out and two that should be knocked down, that are dangerous to the citizens and the children of this town. And we can't move forward because there was no money put in the budget for demolitions. But we got money for other things. I don't know if our priorities are right in this community. And the other thing is, I, I heard, you know, we got potholes around town now that are as big as, big as, well, there's one in front of the fire station that's down to the brick. They've been that way for a week and a half, and I said, where's our road crew at? Where's the, where's the Harry and the boys? I find out two of them are over there painting an office building inside, painting a video room inside the church, which we don't even own yet. What are we doing here in this town? I just want to know, you know what I mean? And I just want to know where our priorities are at. Now, I don't want to go on and on because I hate to be argumentative, but elected officials, we should all, you're right, we should quit arguing and all be on the same page. It can't be, I'll do what I want to do, and you go ahead if you find out by chance, so be it. Now, I'm tired of being on the closed end of everything. And I'm, and folks, I don't need anybody clapping for me. I don't need anybody cheering for me. All I want to do is right for this community. I've been here 70 years. I'm not going to get on a pulpit tonight, but all I want to do is what's right. And if I'm wrong sometimes, I'm going to be wrong. But I want the people to know, they should have the right to speak, to go $4 million in debt, and I hope that they will speak. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Waddell.
I've got nothing today.
Okay, Ms. Braemeyer.
Yes, I do. I haven't been in this city for very long, but I've heard a lot of people talk bad about Mr. Haney, how he never did anything, nobody even knew what he looked like. Well, folks, this is the reason why you never saw him. Why should he use his time to try and help you people when you fight about everything? You don't want any money spent. You don't want any more taxes. Well, somebody has to pay. We can't stay the way we are now. If you want to go forward, it costs money to go forward. So Mr. Haney, who I really did not know, I can't blame him for the way the city has become. Those buildings that have not been repaired, why should he when the people talk terrible about him? And here we go again, trying to, with Mr. Lynch. Now, nobody wants to pay. Nobody wants to have the police radar guns. No, just let everybody go as fast as they want. We don't care. Yeah, come on. Come on. Good. Good. Let's put your worthless face in there. Thank you. I'm done, Mayor.
Mr. Alberini.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Oh, you're fine. Yeah, in the process of a democracy, there's give and take. And I have no problem with people speaking their piece because as taxpayers, you have a right to do so. And I think all of us agree with that 100%. And we do listen to the taxpayers. And I heard some comments on there about the paving of the roads, et cetera. And the taxpayers were getting the short end of the stick. Well, if I recall, in 2019, Milton Avenue got paved. How about those taxpayers? They were happy. Ridge Road got paved. How about those taxpayers? They were happy. West Broad got paved, and I'm happy. And of course, because Mr. Alberini lived on West Broad Street, I made that happen. I don't think so. The Eagle Ridge Project, and I want to, you know, I believe in transparency. Mr. Bariak was kind to go down to East Gate a couple of times and speak on that project. So I appreciate his help in getting that done. It was a team effort. You know, council may not always agree, but in the course of business every day, if we all agreed on the same thing, something's wrong. You know, I need disagreement to like, to get a better, Brian Crop may say, Terry, try this, and I need to listen to that. Or Pastor Kenny say, may try this. I don't know everything. So that's why you have a council. That's why you talk about it. Things may not go as planned, as accordingly. But at the end of the day, you work it out, and you come to the best conclusion you can. I still say Newton Falls is a great community. I love being here. Some of the folks that I have a chance to know for the 17 years I've been here are just wonderful folks. They're the silent majority. They always tell, I mean, they always tell me personally that I, they have never seen Newton Falls move as fast as it has had in the last couple of years. Economic development, I believe we have a new retail store coming in, Mark Dollar General, Family Dollar. You know, that'll help out the community. We've had Taco Bell come in, things like that. Don't knock those because a lot of you aren't job creators. Someone's taking a risk, someone's taking a risk to bring that business into Newton Falls because he's trusting you that you will support it. Now, I watched Mr. Rusko over here. How many of you financially support him? How many do? Thank you. Thank you. And see, you know something? I know him. He's my neighbor. I know his heart. I know how much time he puts into this ball field. And you know something? He doesn't complain about it. But you know, it would be nice if some of us, whether it's 20 bucks, 50 bucks, or 100 bucks, would kick in. These are your kids. These are my grandkids. I would rather have my grandkids playing baseball than texting and video games and all that stuff. So, Mr. Mayor, we are blessed to be living here in Newton Falls. We got a great team here still. I appreciate everybody's hard work, and may God bless you all. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have too much. I just, I do want to thank you for coming out. Some of you, I've been to your houses, I've knocked at your doors, I've spoke to you before I was elected. Plan on continuing to do that if I haven't been to your house since the weather has warmed up, and I'll probably be at your house. I care about each of you. Before being the mayor, I'm a resident here, a fellow citizen and your neighbor, and I love the fact that you're here. I love the fact that you are looking into this stuff and holding myself accountable and the individuals here accountable, and we work together. I think you have good intentions, as well as I would hope that you would respect the intentions of the individuals up here. Because I can tell you, when I was sitting where you're sitting at, for years, I would sit back and I would think, well, that person's stealing that, that person's doing that, that person doesn't like, and then when I sat on this side, I see that every single person up here has good intentions for their community. And I'm thankful for each of them, each council person, the law director, the city manager. And some of the things that are being done appear the first step or two that, hey, that's not a very good idea. That's, they're spending extra money. But in the big picture, some of the things are to, in the long run, save money. And I would say, I would use the church building for an example. You know, the cost that we're getting it for, the expenses of the other buildings that we do have, I'll use that. But I trust these individuals here. I trust you, and it doesn't mean that we're always going to agree on everything. That's what conflict resolution is all about, and we sharpen each other and we come up with a better idea. I know there's different times that maybe Mr. Bariak, Mr. I know there's different times that maybe Mr. Bariak, Mr. Alberini, one of them two comes up with something, and we'll be in executive session, and they'll be, hey, I don't like that idea. Well, what don't you like about it? Well, I don't like this. Well, the question then is, how do I achieve this and fix that situation? And that's what we all do together in a community. And I just want to do a thank you, and I want to be able to continue to walk through this community. I've always prided myself as a person that no matter where I go, I can look you in the eyes, I can hold my head up high. I don't have to be the individual to walk over there because I, because I'm doing something I shouldn't be doing, or I feel bad about it. I want to continue to be that person. You know what my number is? It's right on the site. I'm all ears, and you know, I might not have a direct answer for you right now, but I can tell you, I'll try my best. And the last thing I have is the senior class banners for 2020. If anybody wants to order one of those, they're still available. Speak to Mrs. King. City manager, do you have anything?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to recess into executive session. No, we don't need it. We don't have anything? Locks is checked off. Okay. Let's make a motion to adjourn the meeting then. Mr. Al, okay, Mr. Bariak, Mr. Alberini, roll call.
Braemeyer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Did you want this fired?
No, it's okay.